So we'll come to order. John, last I pledge allegiance, if I may.
I can.
Yes. Please pay him a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call, please.
Ray Anderson.
Present.
Greg Bean.
Present.
Dwayne Lebo.
Present.
Eric Deokyo.
Here.
John Fairchild.
Here.
Christopher Gadway. Curry Jalliker.
Present.
Jason Miller.
Present.
David Trudeau and Ozzy Comer.
Ozzy's not here. For the record, we have a forum. If I may, as approval to the agenda resolved that the superintendent of the school recommends to the Board of Education to approve the agenda, may I have a motion, please?
Motion Curry.
Second Dwayne.
Second Dwayne. Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And right into executive session. Be resolved that the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person. May I have a motion, please?
Dwayne.
Motion Dwayne.
Second Curry.
Thank you Curry for second. Any discussion? I see no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll move this quick.
And we're going to invite each of the building level principals in.
Oh.
To this executive session.
Okay, outstanding. So, uh... Hope it won't be long. Yeah, be resolved that the Board of Education return to regular session. What is the time, please?
Six fifty-eight.
Six fifty-eight, thank you so much. May I have a motion?
Sure.
Second, please.
Dwayne.
Dwayne is the second. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to presentations. Mr. Relation, please, to where the tenure plaques. Oh, Patty, you back on?
Good.
Okay.
All right, so today we've got a couple of different presentations that we're going to go through. First, I just want to acknowledge that later on in our agenda today, we do have some tenure appointments and some of those staff members are here tonight. I saw them in the audience. They will be officially recognized with their tenure plaque in the fall. That's a process we have here in Beacon Town. So you'll be with your own staff in your building. But if you are on the agenda for tenure tonight, I would like you to stand up so that our members can at least see who those faces are. So you're on the agenda tonight. So tonight, I do want to present two different tenure plaques for two administrators who were granted tenure at our last board reading. So I'm going to just say a couple of words and have them both come up, shake their hands and provide them with their plaque. So, you know, last month, both Mrs. Barcom, BES Elementary Principal, and Mr. Burchette, our Associate Principal of High School and Athletic Coordinator, Director, he wears many hats when it comes to athletics and co-curriculars, both received tenure after being granted by the Board of Education. They're amazing additions to the team I've gotten to know over the course of the last year and I'm super impressed with their dedication to our staff and to our students. And I am just really excited that our team is coming together and we're building some really, some real big momentum to move forward with. So with that, I'm going to ask that Mr. Burchette come forward for his tenure plaque. And then Mrs. Barcom. All right, thank you both very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
So next on the agenda for presentations is retirement plaque. So we have five retirees from the district who are here today. He said they would come for tonight's presentation. And I did a little bit of math, so the five individuals from here tonight have a combined 118 years of service within the district. Think about that for a moment. 118 years. At first I was like, I don't think I did 100, right? It's not my shot. I'm like, nope, they actually did. So with that, I would bring up each individual. When I call your name, please step forward. We'll present you with your plaque and then I'm hoping one of my admins would mind taking a picture. I'm going to get everyone up here first and then we'll do a picture. So first, Matthew Tiloski, social studies teacher at the high school. 27 years of experience. And I will just share during my interview process for this position, I was in his room one night. Ah, I love a personal purchase. Congratulations. Can I have you stand right up here? We'll do a photo once we get everyone. Next, elementary teacher with 15 years of experience, Tony Meals. Guess that's weird. Yes, it's real now. Next, family consumer science teacher at the middle school with 32 years of experience, Don Finley. And next, out of our five, teacher age student age with 17 years of experience, Tina Chain. I enjoy my class duty time with Tina over at home over there. And last but not least, art teacher at BES Elementary with 27 years of experience, Renee Ousso. All right, so we're going to have you all come over this way and we'll do a photo. Have you heard what your class is? Could you guys come over here and just sort of sit on the table?
The superintendent has a certain background. Before the photo, it'd be my third year.
If I had to say any comments, I was mentioning your name.
Matt should be in the middle.
Oh yeah, he's in the middle.
Yeah. Suppose I can do that. I don't really need to be in front of the photo, but I can. Congratulations again. There, we're both on the agenda for our tenure tonight. This is what we've come to look forward to in 25 years. Next, for presentations, we'd like to do a board recognition. So John Fairchild, one of our board members, is leaving us at the end of the month after three years of service, John?
Three years and one meeting.
Three years and one meeting?
Yes, I got elected for the extra meeting.
Okay, lucky you. So what I just wanted to say about John is, you know, being new to this position, coming into this role, it's nice to have people who have experienced here at a great Board of Education. John has been a really strong voice in a lot of educational aspects because of his experience as an educator and it's been really, really helpful for me. You know, all of the board members, John, you know, it's just really been nice getting to know you, having some good conversations about education. So I appreciate your service on the board, not only as a fellow board member for our board members, for me as the new superintendent, but also for our staff and for our students. So thank you very much and we have a plaque for you as well. And last but not least, for presentations, another board recognition for our ex-officio member, Ozzy Comer.
Aye.
You know, I've really enjoyed getting to know Ozzy. I know he's served in this role for two years at this point in time. Ozzy's been a very strong voice for the student body, taking a lot of his own time to go and visit each of our other buildings to ensure that their voices are represented here at our Board of Education meetings. His reports are very thorough. He has a lot of really good information. And personally, I've got to know Ozzy in terms of his leadership roles. We've had some good conversations over the course of this year with some things that he was advocating for for our students. I'm super impressed. I know that he is going to make us really proud as a graduate from Beacon Town Central. So Ozzy, congratulations and we've got a plaque for you as well.
Thanks, Ozzy.
Hey, Dustin.
Yes?
Dustin. Oh, here takes pictures.
No, I just wanted to take a second. John, I gotta tell you, I greatly appreciated my time on the board with you. You bring a very interesting point of view. One of the things that I think is great about our board is the varied points of view that we have. I think you can bring a great point of view to the board, level-headed thinking, attention to detail. I greatly appreciated my time on the board with you. Thank you for your service of the board.
Thank you, Padre.
And Ozzy, Ozzy, I gotta tell you, you are an incredibly impressive young man. You, you show that every time you come to the board. You're incredibly prepared and not only that, but you come with a great demeanor. I can tell that you enjoy your time working with the board and all the other things that that has you doing in the school district because of your position. I, I've been incredibly, incredibly proud to work with you on the board and I can't wait to hear what you do in your first year at college and as you go forward in your career, your school career and then your professional career. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, Dustin, I'm very impressed. Obviously, I obviously had, of course, the chance to say something real quick. Thank you for, for folks, Mr. Burchette, Mrs. Barcom, who would continue your service and have done, you know, most wonderfully so far. In addition to, when I see people who have given a commitment to public service, being committed to public service is not easy. And you see folks with 27 or two years of experience, it's just absolutely impressive. And I thank them for dedicating, how many, how many lives and persons they have touched and shaped and formed and to successful positions. Ozzy, good luck at Harvard. Patty said it very well. You're extremely impressive and I'm really proud of you leaving here and that you're going to go and do great things. John Fairchild, when I came on the board just two years ago, you brought 40 years of experience into this, into this position. For those of you who don't know, John is a teacher and a superintendent and we led us through kind of a tumultuous time with selecting a new superintendent. We had an interim superintendent. We had a Dr. Davy leading us through trying to find that next superintendent. It was, we had a lot of questions. Ed Maron's also in the crowd, you know, that was, it was a tough time. John, you brought a question from how do you spend different colors of money to how do you hire a superintendent, contract pieces that we would never have known. And I really would say I appreciate that. John just said to me a minute ago, I said, I said to him, you have, what, 33 years? John said, no, 40. And he said, not a day I didn't want to go to work. I mean, I think that's really touching. Anyway, you're going to be missed here and I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Of course. So at this time, I'm going to turn the stage over to Dr. Davy, District Superintendent for CBS and Dr. Slattery, Executive Director of Special Education, for a brief presentation on their special education program.
Good evening. Good evening. Board President Bean, Vice President Anderson, members of the board, Superintendent Relation over here, members of your administrative team, your students, congratulations and good luck. And to members of your staff and parents in the audience, thank you for allowing us and me, is this on, this is on right? Yeah, yes, okay. Thank you for allowing us and CBS to present this evening. What a privilege it is to provide our annual update and I really enjoyed last year the work with your district and through, throughout your hiring process, so thank you for that opportunity as well. And I want to acknowledge as part of my opening, the fine work that your new superintendent has been representing and undertaking on behalf of your district. Each month, we meet with our chief school officers. Each month, we have a virtual check-in meeting and throughout the month or the year, there are health insurance consortium meetings. There's a variety of other meetings that we meet and Mr. Relation has been doing an outstanding job. He's been well received and accepted by our chief school officers. He's asked amazing questions. He's brought forward some ideas that have contributed to our conversation on a monthly basis and really is advocating on behalf of all of your students and your staff. So congratulations on your great hire and also I want to acknowledge the outstanding and excellent work that he's undertaking on your behalf and on behalf of your district. So as we start our CBS update, I'm pleased to share a few updates this evening and each board member and your administrative team have a copy of our CBS folder. In the folder, you'll notice several handouts and I will start off and say that you have a CBS services summary, which I will, we'll just take in a minute and share the highlights of. I'll also acknowledge that you have various fact sheets. This evening, Dr. Slattery is going to be sharing a special education update. There's a presentation he will share and I'm very pleased that he's joining us. He is our Executive Director of Special Education at CBS. He has been with us five years and we're very pleased in his leadership and I will acknowledge that in a moment, but I'll start off first and say each of our board members have an updated fact sheet. This is the 24-25 fact sheet that includes updates about CBS and the various services we have. You also have individual fact sheets for CBTEC, Management Services and School Support Services. Last year, Ms. Campbell was here and updated the School Support Services and so on and so forth. So those handouts are in the folder and they're also all on our website. So if the audience or teachers would like to see that information, it is all available on our CBS website. You also have on the other side of your folder, the RISE Center for Success handouts as well. And that's a deeper dive that Dr. Slattery will be providing and as part of this update. But there's additional information about each one of our programs. This is a little old school. I do love the electronic versions, but I also appreciate the paper copies and the handouts that you can read on your own time when you don't have access to the electronics. So with that said, as part of my update and this is part of our annual visit, each year we visit all of our component districts and we thank you for that opportunity. Looking at your agenda, I know you've got a busy agenda, so we'll get right to it. I would like to just acknowledge the level of services that Beacon Town participates in with our OSIs. Ms. Parliament, I know you do a great job as a business official and you work with our business officials. I know last week I attended your monthly business officials meeting and they do a great job, so acknowledging your leadership as well as your administrative team's work. And Ms. Taterne, your Assistant Superintendent, who works very closely with Dr. Slattery in your special education programs to support CBS, but also as part of the regional collaboration. As you look at your services update, your COSER aid ratio, that's Cooperative Service Agreement process, it's an incentivized state process where the state reimburses districts based on, on the formula that's, that is given. With that being said, your COSER aid ratio is 66.8 cents on the dollar. So 67 cents on each dollar spent with the CBS services generally come back to your, your district and state aid the following year. So that is an incentivized way to help support your district and to support your taxpayers and your continued participation. You'll notice the various services under Administrative and Management Services, whether it's the administrative capital budget, our health and workers' compensation, insurance coordination, that's the consortium. For all the staff members and retirees and administrators, our health insurance consortium is approximately $125 million annually. That is, and Mr. Relation is on the Board of Directors of both our Workers' Comp and our Health Insurance. There, there's over 10,000 participants and about 4,600 policies. So each policy may have a family member or more than one family member, so approximately 4,600 policies and over 10,000 lives in that consortium. There is a COSER that supports that consortium. You'll also notice the other areas, the FSA, HRA, Teacher Certification, Board of Education, Professional Development and the like. Those are all, all services under the Administrative Management Services that your district participates in. Under Career Tech, Mrs. Friedman, a couple of years ago, came to her students and presented about CBTEC. You are an active utilizer of our career technical education initiatives and programs. You currently have 90 students. So Mr. Bazal, you and the high school team is a, are also a strong supporter of helping your students have those outstanding services. The pre-CTE job target and incarcerated youth. You'll notice the special education students, Dr. Slattery is going to speak about that. You have currently 15 students in a variety of those special education services and you see the various lists and the, and the related services that are available for your students as part of those as well, including the hospital-based education and the other support as well. Lastly, on the backside, you'll notice we have the School Support Services and the variety of services that you participate in there as well, whether it's your staff development, school safety and risk management, public relations, staff development, emergency communication, instructional technology. The whole list is outlined there, I know, Ms. Parliament. Each year you help review that and submit your updates of all the services the district wants to sign up for the following year. Again, outstanding services that provide information to your district and support, including, for example, your communication support that you have, which has, has been a person in your district each week to be able to support your communications. And lastly, the cross-contracted services, those are services that our OSIs does not offer, but are offered available through our OSIs network. So if a district, if your district finds services that you want to participate in from other districts or other OSIs across the state, you can sign up again and receive your COSER aid ability to support your programs the following year. I'll be happy to answer any questions at the end, but I really want to take time now and turn it over to Dr. Slattery. As our Executive Director of Special Education, Dr. Slattery, at one point was an administrator here in your district as well. He knows the region. He started his career many years ago as a CBS special education instructor. He has been our Executive Director of Special Education for the last five years. He joined us from the Prue District where he was, he was a longstanding principal. He has been outstanding in working at the state level on, on our behalf of our region and our special education programs. He works with his colleagues all across the state. He is an officer in the statewide organization of OSIs leaders who make up the special education network across the entire state. He's highly regarded. He works very closely with our CSC chairs and directors of special education and is leading a dynamic and innovative program of special education at CBS. So without any further ado, Dr. Slattery, I'd like to turn it over with my congratulations.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Davy. Good evening to the Beacon Town Central School community. It's my pleasure to be here before you tonight, speaking on behalf of the RISE Center for Success and the vital services that we provide our communities across the North Country. You're probably wondering, hey, what is the RISE Center for Success? It's important to know that we are the Special Education Division of Champlain Valley Educational Services. We serve as a premier provider of educational services for students with moderate to severe disabilities and we're able to do this through our highly specialized programs. Now, why do districts look to us to provide these services? It's really simple. We offer programs and services that our districts cannot provide. It's not because you don't want to provide these services, it's because you don't have a large enough student population with similar needs fitting within the same age spans that state education regulations dictate. We are pulling from a price like 10,500 students across our OSIs region to build these programs. Now, why do we build these programs? First and foremost, it's the most important thing we can do for our most vulnerable populations. Secondly, because of longstanding federal legislation called FATE. FATE stands for Free and Appropriate Public Education. It guarantees access to education for our students with disabilities regardless of what their needs are. It's at no cost to their development, so very, very important longstanding legislation. So how do we specialize? We specialize first and foremost because of our staff. We are over 225 highly specialized staff with over 20 different titles that are part of our multidisciplinary teams. All of our work with students is focused on post-secondary success. So whether you're a five-year-old student in our program or a 21-year-old who will be exiting or graduating shortly, we're always focused on that end in mind. How can we help our students, you know, be successful when they graduate our program? All of our supports are tailored, help students overcome barriers that are inherent due to their disability. We want to foster those strategies and skills and the safety of our school setting and then grow those strategies outside the school setting so that students can feel confident with who they are and find success in whatever they're doing. Partnerships really powers what we do as an organization. It helps us elevate programming, helps us evolve to meet the evolving needs of our students. We operate with 60 different partnerships locally, on the state level and across the nation that helps us evolve. Then finally, training for staff. We probably provide more training than anyone can ever imagine to hold 225 more staff. Some of it is program-specific, some of it everyone intends, but it's very, very important to maintain all the certifications that are needed to meet the needs of our students. Now, where are we located? So we have six locations across Clinton Essex Counties. Our main campus, Plattsburgh Campus, hosts 23 different classrooms. Our Mindville Campus serving the needs of our Essex County Schools, hosts six classrooms. You may not know, but we have two satellite sites, the Plattsburgh City School District, two academic classrooms within PHS and two life skills classrooms within their Duken Building, their administrative building. Then finally, we're also on State Plattsburgh at Sibley Hall, a work source and that's for our partners in transition or adult programming that is funded through PWDB and Axis VR. Now, what programs do we offer at RISE? Our first program is our 1-2 Academic Behavioral Program. That ratio in front stands for two students, one teacher, two teaching assistants. Now, this is for school-age students, so students ages five through 21. Students within this program are working for the Read the Global Diploma. Academically, they're performing at par with similar age peers, but they require, as deemed by the CSC, a smaller set with additional support so they can be successful. Students are programmed, they can graduate from CBS with that diploma or they can transition back to their component district for that least restrictive requirement. Our next program is our 1-2 Life Skills Classroom, same ratio, same age of students that we're servicing. This program's a little different. It's focused on meeting the needs of students that are performing two years or more below similar age peers in terms of academic functioning. Instruction takes the form of functional academics in terms of mathematics, reading and writing. Typically, students in our Life Skills Program also receive a heavy dose of related services as dictated by their IEP. And then once students reach the age of 14, we initiate work experience in-house on our Plattsburgh campus with the goal of providing some community-based opportunities and I'll talk about that a little bit. Our next program is our 613 Autism Program, it's a different ratio, six students, one teacher, three teaching assistants. This program is for students with a classification or diagnosis of autism, similar, same age, ages five through up to 22. Autism is a spectrum disorder. Our program focuses on the more moderate to severe end of that spectrum. Many of our students are nonverbal. They need assistive technology to communicate their wants and needs and with those barriers come additional behaviors that can be pretty intense, which requires additional training on our part for our staff. The neat thing about our autism program, we started it eight years ago with two sections through a partnership with the England Center for Children at Massachusetts. That program has grown to seven sections present date with the need from our region to work for. So we're actively working to meet the needs of the region and continue to offer a program that we're proud of and can, A, find the space for it and B, staff appropriately. An additional thing of our autism program, we have a social worker embedded, Folianna. Her role isn't the traditional school counselor, counselor role, excuse me. Her role is to know and understand the needs of our students, what they're learning in the classroom and then she works with the families, help carry over the skills from the classroom into the home setting and to help families understand their child's disability and how they can support them throughout their school-age career beyond. Our final program is our 611 ITSP Intensive Therapy Supports Program. New ratio, six students, one teacher, one teaching assistant. This program is for students at the secondary level, so grades six through 12. This program originated approximately 12 years ago as a need from the region or component districts asking for a more intensive and therapeutic program that we can offer locally so that students that needed appropriate education could find it locally, continue to live with their parents, not be placed in a residential treatment facility. This program has grown to three sections over the past three years. Each classroom is equipped with a full-time school counselor. We have pediatric psychiatry services in the consult format, so each month, our pediatric psychiatrist consults with the family, the student and the staff. consults with the family, the student, and the staff. We have adventure-based counseling built in on a weekly basis that culminates in a monthly excursion typically in the Adirondacks, really focused on those non-traditional ways to learn and build confidence that's needed to help overcome some of the barriers that are part of disabilities that we serve. And then, yeah, school counseling is also embedded within this service. Now, I mentioned work experience earlier. It's so important to what we do. On our Plattsburgh campus, it's really divided into in-house opportunities, which then can progress to community-based opportunities. So those first three blue bullets are all in-house opportunities. We have our K's Lab. We believe Beacon Town sent a team of professionals a couple months ago to check it out and see if this investment would be worthwhile to have on this campus. We have our in-house simulation work experiences as well as our Rise and Shine Cafe, which provides rich opportunities for students in preparation for a job, career readiness, then wanting to get kids out of the community. That starts out first with outings, the volunteer work, establishing a relationship with some of our partners in the community that can then translate to work sites and on-the-job work sites during the school day with the support of our teaching assistants. Oh, you may not know, we also provide 11 itinerary providers across 10 of our component school districts. We have a full-time special education teacher assigned to the child and adolescent psychiatric unit at CBPH. Her job is to provide instruction for students that are short-term, stay there due to potential mental crisis, need, they still need to pursue their education. So it's important that they're able to access it where it'll provide that service. We are the annual provider of extended school year, which is summer school for the region. And Eric mentioned briefly our Partners in Transition Adult Services Branch. This would not be an administrative presentation if we didn't have charts and numbers for everyone in the audience. So with that, RISE centered by the numbers, you can see, over the past three years, we've had steady growth in our enrollment to the tune of 51% approximately. We've been able to meet regional needs through a workforce crisis, through a space shortage, and really, we're grateful for our partnership with Plattsburgh City School District. If we were unable to lease those four classrooms from Plattsburgh, we would have approximately 32 students with disabilities from our region without programs. These metrics are all part of our strategic planning. So this next graph really talks about what are our students when they graduate from the RISE Center? What credentials are they exiting with? Last year's cohort, 44% of our students left with their regions or local diploma. That second row there, what are they doing upon exiting? We don't follow cohorts after high school, but when they leave, we know what they're doing. 63% entered employment immediately upon graduation, and then 31% of this cohort entered Adult Services, many of which is in our Partners in Transition program. This next chart is really, it's a new metric that we started tracking. It's last year. It's one of the most important things we can do for our students with special needs. We really are focused on building student independence. Students are able, they're entitled, they qualify for a lot of the school-based services up until the age of 22. When they leave and exit, those services are gone. You live in a rural region. There's not a lot of services available. So we want to prepare our students to live independent lives regardless of their disability. So these metrics here, that first one, percentage of students moving to a less restrictive environment, 35% last year's cohort moving into this school year shifted down the continuum. So maybe they went from a 6-1-3 to an 8-1-2. Maybe they went from one of our 8-1-2 programs back to our component district. We had 22 students last year transition from the RISE Center back to their component districts. That next metric, percentage of students moving to a more restrictive environment, so on the other end of the continuum, 4%. That means we weren't able to meet the needs of the student in our setting with the services that we have, and they needed more to reach that FATE. And then finally, this next one is really high. We're proud of it, but it's really going to be an outlier. The percentage of students where we were able to reduce the reliance and support of that one-to-one aid service from last year to this year, 58%. That's in conjunction where we increased our classroom ratio. So previously, we had 8-1-1s. We increased those to 8-1-2s in our autism program. It used to be a 6-1-1. So increasing that helped us to reduce that reliance on student aids. Now, in closing, how are we able to do so much? It's really because of our amazing staff. They are the heart and soul of what we do in service of the communities of our North Country. Why do we do it? It's really because of these amazing students. I could stand here and tell you stories about each one of our kiddos and their successes, but instead, I thought we'd share a little bit of our why with you. Literally, yeah. Now, with that, well, yeah, wrong way. So in preparation for this outreach to our component district, we had some of our families. Hey, we're going to be talking in your home districts. Would you mind sharing a few words? Please, don't sign your name to it. Think of it as a testimonial. No pressure. Please, you know, you don't have to include your child's name. The four we have here are from parents, and they wanted to have their name on it. They said, please do not redact or remove any information from it. We're really proud to be a part of the RISE Center family. We want you to share our experience. I'll just focus on the one in the middle. I'm almost at the age where I can read her, so I make it a little closer. CBS was such a big step for us to take as we live an hour away from the school. That was four years ago, and the only regret we had is that we didn't make the move sooner. Blake has improved incredibly in such a specialized setting. We are so thankful for the teachers and staff that have made these last four years a success. We would recommend this school to anyone. And that's from Kim and John. And then, yeah, let that be back up here. We're happy to answer any questions.
Sure, and thank you. And before we move into the question phase, I'd like to offer a special acknowledgement as well to the Beacon Town Central School District's BOCs Board Member Representative. You know him well. Mr. Ed Marin has been on our BOCs Board, was active in your board for many, many years as well. He's been on our board for 14 years. He has also served for most of that time as a BOCs Board Officer, and he has been our Vice President for quite a few years now. So we're so pleased that he represents your district with distinction. He's passionate about your students. He's passionate about all students and a strong, strong advocate for career and technical education, special education, and high-quality services to your district. So, Mr. Marin, would you like to share anything at all?
Sure.
Okay. He does an outstanding job. So we thank you, Mr. Marin, for your service in front of all of your home crowd and your supporters. We thank you for your service. He's outstanding to work with that you know. So now, I'd like to just ask Dr. Slattery up and open the floor up to President Bean or Vice President Anderson for any questions.
I do have a few questions, if that'd be all right, Dr. Slattery?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, obviously, the services that you offer at your RISE Center are phenomenal. We utilize them in the district. I do have a couple of questions about kind of capacity, current utilization, and, you know, potential plans for growth at the RISE Center.
Yeah.
So, do you have an idea of what your current capacity is at the RISE Center?
So, current capacity, meaning, so we have our Mindville Campus. We have 30, we have 33, 34 classrooms throughout the two counties. If all of our classrooms were full without any requests from state to go over those ratios, I would have to make a guess here, probably around 235, 240.
Okay.
With, that's within 5% one way or another.
No, and that's fair. I'm not holding your feet to fire, to the fire, on an exact number. Just curious. And what is your current utilization?
Boy, it's pretty high. I want to say we're at 230. You know, it's pretty high. We have some vacancies that are very specific to campus, specific to program, and specific to age range. And so note that our enrollment also fluctuates, you know, during the course of a school year.
Well, like this year, I mean, it's up there. I mean, it's in the high 90s.
Yeah, definitely, yes.
Do you have plans to grow your programs, increase your capacity?
Yeah, absolutely. Now, during the presentation, I talked about enrollment growing. And, you know, each of the past three to four years, we've grown one to three sections, depending on the program and the need, and then depending on where we can find space. Right now, going to this new school year, '25, '26, we were capped at space at our Plattsburgh Campus. I was able to get CB Tech to give us another classroom last summer, but they're capped. Our Mindville Campus is capped. We're always looking to partner with our component districts to possibly lease space. But right now, our plan, with that new CTE center opening scheduled to open for fall of 2026, that's going to allow us to expand our operations at our Plattsburgh Campus down the hall. So I'll have, you know, a conservative estimate, 10 classrooms available to open programming in. Mind you, it's a two-part equation. I'm not going to be able to staff 10 classrooms to the level that we would like, I don't think, anyway. But systematically and strategically, we do want to be able to open depending on the needs of the regions and, you know, the requests of our component districts.
And you're thinking that potential growth in capacity would happen for the 2025, 2026 school year or beyond that?
Oh, the following school year. So we won't have-
'26, we said.
Yes, you got it. We won't have space available. We're one year out until we have that space available to us.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, great question. Happy to answer any other questions from Beacon Town Board or Superintendent Relish.
I just have a quick one. In research, how does BCS compare to the local districts? Like, we were talking about the year eight ratio. Are there any other programs that are currently, we are not currently utilizing or that you would recommend?
Yeah, so Beacon Town is a great school system. You guys have a robust special education program, really the most robust one in the region. When Dr. Davey spoke about that eight ratio, that's for co-served services outside of special education. So that 60-
66 points?
Yeah, 67%. Doesn't come back, special education aid is for excess costs. Aid, which is a different mechanism, it isn't specific to BOCs aid. So you won't receive that percentage of aid on students attending our programs and services. Great question. I'd say I'll get that all the time.
With the, and it sounds like your enrollment has grown over the years, right? I mean, it's going up considerably. Do you see a need for school districts to start taking on some of the, you know, some of the burden in these more specialized classrooms themselves to meet the needs of their local district?
Yeah, you know, that's a great question. Those are discussions that we have at the regional table with all of our directors of special education. And it's, the context of every district is so unique, and I know Beacon Town has the largest enrollment. And I think the variables at play when a district is considering that if you have, you know, enough students within an age span where you can open up a program, it's no brainer. And, you know, I'll say, hey, you may want to look at your numbers because they see you have seven or eight of your students that are going to be in the same classroom. You may want to consider, you know, opening your own program if you can. The problem becomes, you know, additional related services to support the program, additional supports that are built into the program. But then, do you have a student population that's sustainable to maintain that program? Or are you having peaks and valleys where, as a, you know, as a BOCs center, it would be better off for us to run it and operate it? And this is, you know, the model within the Plattsburgh City School District, they're benefiting from us, you know, their student population, their school community is benefiting from our program, our system of supports, where their students get to stay with their peers and stay, you know, high school's a really great example. I know it's a high school setting. They've been in a high school. We have students that were, you know, they just didn't have enough supports offered within that system. It's no fault to anyone else. Were there, they get to stay in the system that they've known their entire school career in some cases, and then can find success with the right supports. So really, in that situation, it's a win-win.
Thank you.
So, and I'll just add and say that I know we've had regular conversations with Mr. Relish and our chief school officers about whether or not our component districts have any extra space to offer any of our, any special education classrooms. So we do have several, as Dr. Slattery was mentioning about Plattsburgh. So we had, they have been fortunate and added several classes over the years, so we do have that representation. And I know Beacon Town spaces are limited, is limited within your district as well. There was a time, a decade ago or so, where there were even considerable more BOCs classes, CBS classes, out in the component districts. There was a retraction, and we went back to our program, our services and programs onsite, but we've been trying to make that effort as well. And we've asked our superintendents to, if you have room and you'd like to really rent a class to us, our students have the teacher, they have the support staff, and we work closely with our administrators, and we also provide support as well. So that's a possibility if there's space and that opportunity, continue to work together. So if there's interest and room, we would love to continue to partner with Beacon Town in that way as well. So there are some opportunities for partnership and continue, you know, work together in addition to sending students to our campuses.
Yeah. And for those classrooms in Plattsburgh, you guys brought on not only the teaching staff, but also the support staff?
Yeah, it's our entire infrastructure. It's a CBS program where we lease the classroom space, and we lease ancillary services. So think of, you know, school nursing, pushing into various classrooms with the support of our 8-1-2 team and the counseling supports that come with it.
Very interesting. Thank you very much. I really do appreciate you guys.
Great question.
Thank you, Dr. Slattery.
Thank you, Dr. Davey.
Thank you for the opportunity and wish everyone a successful and successful year. Now, thank you, Dean. Thank you for the rating. And thank you, Mr. Marin. All right. Gentlemen, you're welcome to stay if you'd like. Here also, I understand if you have to, you have to go. Moving on to reports, Mr. Relish.
Yes, I will do my best to make things, the reasons I can. I know I tend to get long-winded. For those who are here on a regular basis, you know that about me. So first, just another quick update, strategic planning. You know, I'm continually being impressed with the work being done at the building levels. So we have one more building left to go to work with Nicole, our consultant from Alabria Bay. And then from there, a lot of the buildings have not only one, two, three, sometimes four different follow-up strategic planning meetings. I've been kept in the loop by email. I try to attend those that I can, but it's been super exciting to see that initial stage of data collection get to our district level to those two big priorities. And now the buildings are working collaboratively with their committees to say, how does this work for us in our building? I attended a session, I think it was last week, a week or two together a little bit at this point in time, but it was a great meeting where I saw staff say, well, this is how we want to do this, and we might want to break this apart here. Working collaboratively in small groups, coming back and reporting now, it's just been a really, really good process. And I'm excited to see the building set up for that year one action plan in all four of our buildings. And to know that it's a collaborative effort with staff coming together and having conversations and being vulnerable and sharing some- and being vulnerable and sharing some thoughts on things that they've experienced in the past. I really appreciated that. And, you know, it's a testament to the movement we're trying to make to build collaboration, trust, and that ability to work together. So I'm excited about that. Next, just a really quick update. So a couple of meetings ago, we had, I don't know if kids unplugged. They came and spoke briefly about, you know, our screen time kind of conversation, what it looks like here. I have worked with our administrators. The administrators have then worked with their building-level leadership teams. I'm formulating responses to the six questions that we have. So I have that all together. I've got an email that will go out tomorrow morning back to the person who came and spoke to us. So we have all of that information. I believe I shared it with the board in last Friday's update as well. So I just want to thank the administrators and the teachers who collaborated. This allowed us, those six questions allowed us to kind of think about what we are currently doing and then start some of those conversations about how we can think about these things in a more thoughtful way. We do a lot of really good things, but there were a couple of specific questions, like, you know what? We don't track this quite yet, or we don't have a goal in regards to screen time at certain instances. So it's how do we do that a little bit better? We've got a lot of safeguards when it comes to, you know, our filtering software. We're bringing on some new pieces. We're changing how we use YouTube. We've done that already. We're looking at an allow list as opposed to kind of open and then restricting there. Those are steps we're taking in one regard, but the screen time situation is something that we're going to continue to have conversations about. And the admins don't know this yet, but I'm going to keep it on our admin agenda so we can have those building-level conversations, like, hey, did you notice we were using a screen for this? And it could have been a movement break or something different. And our staff do a great job, and that's the one thing I want to point out. I'm in positive as much as I can be, and in fact, there's a lot going on. But it's possible to think about some things, which I appreciate very much. So we're going to continue that conversation. Next, just briefly, I can say this in my Friday update to the board. The interview season is upon us. A huge thanks to our administrators and our teachers who are sitting on those committees. We do have, you know, several openings. We're filling some of them tonight, hopefully. But it's a very busy time of year. Chelsea is consistently dropping new interviews on my calendar where I've got any open time. So, you know, hopefully, we're going to get everyone secured and locked in for a successful start to the next school year. But it is definitely a busy time of year. And I just want to acknowledge the work of our administrators and our teachers who are taking time out of their classroom to sit on these committees to evaluate the candidates and bring forward recommendations to meet and do that final interview. And the last part, just, you know, this is a super busy time of year. I look at my calendar, and I use orange for meetings I have to be at, and it's pretty much all orange. And I know that's true for the administrators and for a lot of our teachers as well. The one thing that I just want to say, you know, to all of our staff and our students is make sure that you stop and enjoy those moments. Today was the science fair at Carmel and Head for fourth grade, and I took twenty minutes of able to walk around and see the kids and listen to their presentations. You know, there could have been some other things maybe on my radar, but it was important for me to take that time to walk around and see the kids and just be mindful of that. At the end of the day, we're here for our kids. They're doing a lot of great stuff. We want them to be excited. We had the National Junior Honor Society last night, seeing, I think it was forty-one new inductees at the middle school level. Forty-four, I was closing my account with my memory. But those are the events that are important for our kids, for our staff, and for our families. So while it's busy, it's that take time and smell the roses. We've got to make sure we're doing that because it's going to fly by these last three weeks. So just want to put that out there. Enjoy those celebrations. They're very important as we wrap up the school year.
And can you name one scientific principle that you learned today?
You know what? I learned about oxygen in different liquids when it comes to apples and turning to the brown color.
That's true. That was my, that was my child.
And I got it all right, right?
You did actually get that right. I was actually impressed that you were listening. He gave him a presentation, my fourth grader, and I'm impressed that he retained that.
There's a lot going on.
There was a lot going on, yes.
Hey, Justin, on the topic of screen time, when you're talking about monitoring, monitoring screen time, like, I mean, as you know, I've got three little ones, right? Two in the elementary school, one in the middle school. One of the biggest hurdles is trying to, A, keep up with current guidelines. You know, when I say guidelines, recommendations for kids and screen time, that's a hurdle for a lot of parents, right? So I'm curious, do you have any plans of looking at potentially some sort of system that allows parents to understand how much screen time their kids have had during the day so that we can try to remain within guidelines when we get home?
Yeah, so based on the questions that came to us through this organization, I have reached out to Gary Lambert, who's our Director of I T, Security, and Communications. He's looking into what our systems currently can do. So we're using securely right now. We're switching to a new system. So we're looking at what that could look like. The one challenge that we are going to have to look at with the new organization is what does screen time look like versus open Chromebooks? Like, my Chromebook can open, the screen is technically on, so the system would likely track that it is on. However, I'm not actively using it. So we're looking at what that could look like and how to determine active screen time versus non-active screen time. And from my understanding of, you know, kind of the questions from the organization is they're really interested in, are we providing a lot of free play, free choice, non-screen opportunities for students as opposed to putting a board up and having something playing there? Which are those are the conversations with our staff that we want to have. But I am looking into it to see what we could figure out and what we could pull data-wise. But that's a caveat that we're trying to figure out right now, like, how do we determine the active screen time versus non-active?
And the reason I ask, right, is that, I mean, to anybody that has an iPhone, you know, you get like a daily or weekly screen time update, and it will break it down by the type of application you're using. Because part of it's the TV, right, but part of it's the time they spend on the Chromebook. And I think that's even a bigger part because the screen is so close to them. And, you know, based on like the, like the C D C recommendations and stuff like that, I mean, they are fairly strict. So like, right now, as a parent, we're kind of, you know, we're operating without some pretty necessary information when we're trying to make screen time choices for our kids.
No, absolutely. I hear you on that. We're going to continue to dig in, and I'm going to figure out what we can and can't pull right now and look at what opportunities exist in the future. I do know that Mr. Lambert has engaged our new organization with what could reports look like from you with this?
Awesome. Thank you.
Of course.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Mrs. Parland.
I don't have a lot to discuss, not that we're not extremely busy this time of year, but nothing exciting. We're closing out our books in the business office. We've got, you know, two more weeks left. And the bus garage is getting ready to roll over routes and get summer schools situated. Buildings and grounds is getting everything ready to clean and do all of their summer stuff with minimal help, unfortunately. And the cafeteria is getting ready to feed all kinds of people this year. They have, they, she, Roxy's done a great job. She's partnering with J C E O and the town, and we're going to be feeding lots and lots of kids, which is awesome. So we're extremely busy, but nothing real exciting to talk about. So our audit actually starts July twenty-eighth, so we will have a short turnaround come June thirtieth. Twenty-eight days to get everything ready.
Just a thought, we have an audit committee meeting scheduled for the first week in July, but I don't know if you'll have two board members available since I'm on that committee.
Yeah.
And we won't have new board members on board, so maybe we move one way or the other with that.
Yes, we, it is on our radar, so.
That's why I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Gentlemen, any questions for Mrs. Parland? No? Thank you so much. Thank you, Mrs. Parland. Building principles, please. Mrs. Nelson.
Just roam around here. Right now, students are focused on final exams and projects, the most exciting time of the school year in middle school. There's great energy and effort in the classrooms. Our staff is doing a fantastic job supporting them through these final weeks. Last week, we held our final advisory challenge. The human knot was the challenge. That was fun to do. I participated in that along with Mrs. Manchester. Students reflected on the purpose of these activities that we've held throughout the year and shared that they've helped build teamwork and cooperation. It's something we will continue to do next year. Their favorite two challenges, musical chairs, which was, no one got hurt, so that was very safe. And soaring eagle, where we put a stuffed eagle on top of a bouncy ball and see how far it goes. So that was a lot of fun. They were big hits, and we'll continue those two challenges next year. We also had our last middle school dance. Yay! We were all happy about that. They're always very exciting. This one was fun and just a positive way for students to celebrate together at the end of the year. We had so many parent volunteers. Without them, this wouldn't have been able to happen. So just a huge shout out to about the seven, seven parent volunteers that, so we appreciate them very much. As Superintendent Relation mentioned, our National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony happened. We had forty-four new members. It was a very proud moment for family and friends. The auditorium was packed. It was just a great recognition of student achievement, accomplishment, and leadership. Earlier this month, we had our own middle school-type science fair with the watershed student showcase that took place. That was a huge success. We have a very strong partnership with SUNY Plattsburgh with that. Students presented thoughtful, creative projects, educated themselves in community members of microplastics and drainage. I was impressed with their quality of work in the dioramas, the models that were all over. It was awesome. Looking ahead, of course, we're excited about our awards ceremony at the end of the year, our end-of-the-year field trips, our great fun days, our ice cream day. Thankful for the B M S P T O for doing that. So it's been busy, it's been productive, and it's been fun, so, and more to continue. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Barkham, please.
Good evening. I had printer issues, and it's in my laptop. I want to start off, actually, talking about the E L A testing. That was obviously a little bit ago, but only presenting every other month, I wanted to share some data with you. So we went up in our participation rates in E L A, math, and science across the board, which I'm excited about. We're eighty-four percent with E L A, for example. So just in case really this pay is important, and it's okay if they don't, but I'm glad that number going up as well. So again, highest point for us was eighty-four percent for our E L A for grades three, four, and five. Also, during the afternoon, I mentioned the science fair as well. We had a school day science fair. We would come down, walk around, and check everything out. But at night, we had our science fair, and we had judges and big announcements this year, presentations in the classroom fair in the all-purpose room with awards and everything. So I want to announce that best in show was Noah Backfield and Odin Spencer for life cycle of a chicken. We had third place tied. We had Eleana Jabad for hydrogel base masks. And then also tied for third place was Conley Bean and Cora Hoad for gummy bear osmosis. Second place was Hayden Crichetti and Gage Stewart with what ball bounces the highest? And they had fun in the gym doing that. And first place was Jason Rafferty for tornado in a bottle. So they did a really great job. Presentations were amazing, and just the fact that they can, when you go around the science fair, it's just boof, 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 boof. They just go on top of whoever's there, and it's nice to see they can just kind of go off on the fly. We had this last few weeks and this week, our screenings for pre-K and kindergarten. We've had a lot of families coming in. Our biggest kindergarten yet for the fall, as far as knowing already who's going to be there. That doesn't always happen. The E L A school was supposed by, we get phone calls that like kids need to come to school. So we have a lot on record already, which we're excited about because getting those screenings then is really important. Upcoming, a number of things upcoming. We have our data meetings next week, which I'm excited about. It's really nice to get our staff together to really look at what we're doing for next year for those groups and how the kids have done. Been a lot of work this year with our reading piece. So looking forward to seeing next year's data meeting in June, what those kids in K one look like next year based on what we've done this year, and hopefully next year, we'll continue that as well. U P K graduation's coming up. We usually have it in the evening over at the town hall. This year, they asked permission to do it during the day, so every single student can be there. Sometimes we have kids who can't get back at night, so I'm thrilled to have it in the daytime. Might meet new challenges with that, but excited for the change. It'll be great. So obviously, U P K graduation, kindergarten graduation, pre-k makeup ceremony, all that's happening. Field day is happening, equal pride assembly, our last one. Recently had our spring concert as well. Students did a fabulous job. And I want to end with talking about strategic planning committee. We've had two meetings. First one with Nicole was on May ninth. And one thing I shared with Principal Salter tonight, and she has her first meeting tomorrow, was the level of flexibility Nicole had. We were halfway through our day, and the staff was like, hang on, I have some questions about direction this is going. And we kind of flipped the script and changed everything up, and she was so flexible with us. She was so well-versed, able to guide us through that process. I think the staff felt supported. We were able to move forward, and I felt confident going into June fourth last week with the staff to move on with some guidance from her. So I think we're on the right path. And of course, we have the two priorities from the district. And we're focusing on number one, which is cultivate a thriving, inclusive, and safe community. And so our grade level teams last week on Thursday, they want to work K one, two, three, and four, five to work on behavior matrices and expectations for those grade level bands. So much we have is for pre-K up to grade five, but you look at a five-year-old versus an eleven-year-old, expectation should be different. What they can handle should be different. So they're looking at that very closely with some data as well, so they're doing a nice job.
Thank you, Mrs. Barkham. Yeah? Thank you for your work this year. Thank you, Mrs. Nelson, as well. Where'd you refer you? Oh, there you are, right there, yes. Ozzy, is this your last?
Yes.
Or will be July will be your last? This is it? Okay. The pressure's on, Ozzy. It's got to be the best one yet.
Considering that, so with C H S, I talked to three kids this time. I was able to drive down, after my school day, I talked with some students before they had theirs. I talked with Hayden Ovid, Sam Steele, and Camilla Sissama Shrohano. They were very active. I had like two pages of notes from them. So first and foremost, I talked about a lot of the events happening in the, at C H S, for example, stuff like the science fair, which was mentioned, as well as a lot of other smaller events. Like, they had their last equal pride assembly. They had some assemblies that were partly put on by student council members and by students, along with the fact that they mentioned that they started helping the mascot, which is really, they wanted me to talk about that. It was really cool to them. They get to like help out the mascot and like really spread equal pride at like multiple levels. Another thing they mentioned is the Relay for Life. They collected luminarias. I think I'm saying that correct, which is like those lantern things. And they, those went to organizers for Relay for Life, just to kind of help spread and help that project to continue going. They also talked about some of the trips that they're going on. Student Council is having a trip to Champions Fun Zone to celebrate just the leadership and all the dedication that they put into it. Because especially at the elementary level, like, they're doing more than they arguably. Like, they put so much time and effort into that, so they, I think that's really special. As well as the, on the twelfth of June, I think I have my dates right for that, the fifth grade is going on a trip to Great Escape, so they're very excited for that. As well as that, some other events, such as the concert band was able to show off instruments to third graders and students, other older students in the building were able to kind of work with the younger students more and more, especially as they're starting to kind of transition towards the middle school. So programs like the E G L S, where fifth graders work with kindergartners, are kind of wrapping up, and they're really just kind of getting to leave an impression of positive leadership onto these younger students. They are very excited for both for the older kids, but also the younger kids to have kind of a role model and a friend to kind of have, not only like in school, the E G L S program, they're telling me. Even on the bus, the, and on outside of school, these connections that they're making are actually like really mattering and helping younger and older students kind of break out of their shell. And last but not least, the students were very excited about middle school, ironically. And their transition towards that. They're very excited to continue their leadership, continue all of their hard work. Especially now that a lot of them have done their final exams, and final exam season is somewhat over for them. And they're kind of just in the last few days. They're very excited for middle school and kind of the opportunities and leadership and freedom they'll have while they're there. So transitioning to high school, the last few months have been very busy for high schoolers. A lot of people I talked to focused on a lot of the A P testing that's been going on. It's been very busy, but the students have done a really good job at keeping hallways respectful for finals, and a lot of students have been doing a very good job about preparing for finals for both regencies, A P exams, and general finals. There's been a lot of review sessions that have impacted a lot of teachers and students working in and out of school as much as they can to really prepare and do the best they can on these finals and put their best foot forward. do the best they can on these finals and put their best foot forward for these. So I commend the student body for that as well. Along with that, seals of bilateral C and civic readiness are in. I don't have numbers for civic readiness, just because I wasn't able to talk to the coordinator for that. But I know for bilateral C, we had one French student and I think six Spanish students, I should know him in Spanish, get the seal of bilateral C. So the teachers are very proud of their students. I know every single student that went for it in Spanish was able to get it. So Senator St. Louis, the Spanish teacher, is very, very happy about that. And the students are happy as well, showing that. There's a lot of dedication, not only like the core classes, but a lot of dedication to kind of those electives as well. A lot of time was put into it by those students. There was a lot of elections and club activities that have been happening for the end of the year, preparing for the next year. I know the next year junior election, so the sophomore election is about to happen. The student council and junior elections both just ended. So everything's kind of getting settled and getting prepared for next year. FFA and Mollyland both had their interviews and election processes kind of happened. So there's a lot of students not only preparing for our seniors, because obviously a lot of seniors are preparing for the next step in life, but a lot of students are also just preparing for the next year of school for both academically, but also extracurricular wise. And on that note, a lot of students talked about the sports season landing. We had a lot of the finale, like the end games for a lot of our sports. One of note is our flag football getting to the final four and having a very close game against the number one team in the state. I think it was thirty-three, thirty-eight. So that's huge. A lot of excitement, not just from the flag football team, but also the student body for that. It was really exciting. We got to like watch them and like send them off to their final four game. So it was like very exciting. Along with that, just because I'm on track, we had state qualifiers. There's over ten students going to states from Beaverton Town for that, including like three relays. So that's really exciting for track and field. And a lot of other sports are just like finally getting to their, end of their seasons, and students are very excited about that. End to end, a lot of, all right, there's been other events, such as scholarship night, which is coming up, NHS induction, which is tomorrow, I'm pretty sure. And a lot of just events that have been happening around senior banquet at prom for juniors and seniors, just so much work by advisors, students, administration, everybody to kind of like put on these events and make sure they're successful. And a lot of people, like I mentioned, the general excitement for graduation and the end of the year. People are very excited for summer. They're very ready now that their finals are mostly finished, unless if they're in a regent's class. And the seniors are very excited for graduation, which is happening only in a couple of weeks, a little less than three weeks. So everybody's extremely excited. And with that, I also just wanted to have a note that I am very grateful for the opportunity that you guys have given me. I'm extremely happy with my time here. It's been kind of an honor to do this for two years, and it's been probably one of my favorite things to do. I love talking with the kids. I love representing students across the districts. I like going to these meetings. These are very interesting to me. It's really cool to be there and be a part of this process. And with that, I also want to thank the board, but also the principals for letting me kind of like take up their time, go to their schools, talk with their kids, and be a nuisance to an extent, but also just really like from my part onto them, but also them helping me so much in creating these reports and making sure their students are represented, as well as dealing with the annoying kid that's like, hey, go to your building for the third month. So I really appreciate the principals. I really appreciate the board, and thank you guys for this opportunity.
Hi, welcome, Ozzy. Actually, well said, Ozzy. And best of luck in your next endeavor. If you ever need anything, we're here to re-support you. And become a teacher, don't become a lawyer. Do something positive. Committee reports. Any, Dwayne O'Conne, Policy Committee?
Yep. So two policies went over, twenty-two forty-five, ex officio student member of the board, and that is going to be adopted for the first reading for the next board meeting. And also eight-one-one-three, extreme heat conditions, and that's also set up for the first reading.
Thank you so much. Safety Committee meeting, anyone?
So I can talk about the Safety Committee meeting. So we met recently, and off the date off the top of my head. So Safety Team reviewed the district safety plan, which is what is done this time of year. We had Tom Smith, representative from the CBS Health and Safety Team. He gave us some additional feedback that was important for us to have. There were a couple of things in our plan that we were, that we did not have, so we would have been out of compliance. He gave us some language that we could put in. I shared that back with the committee so they could look at it all prior to us posting it, because it needs to be posted for thirty days for public feedback. So Chelsea has assisted with that with Mr. Lambert. It is now a pop-up on the website, so it's our normal process for that thirty-day public feedback. And then we should have the plan back to the board at the July meeting for formal adoption, so that we can then submit it to the state. It was a productive meeting. We went line by line and we had the plan in advance to add comments on different pieces. So we went comment by comment through the entire plan. It's one of those meetings that it takes a little bit of time, but it's really important because we cleaned up some stuff that just seemed a little bit out of, out of, you know, some language pieces. So it was, I thought it was a very good meeting. It was a total wild.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Moving on to-
Can I, can I, can I touch base on the, on the Policy Committee?
Please, go ahead.
So one of the policies, as Dwayne said, that's, that is currently up for a first read is twenty-two forty-five, that's ex officio student members of the board. We're going to be, should it be passed, we're going to be increasing our number of ex officios to also include a member of the middle school. From what I understand, we've already put out some questionnaires as to, you know, who, you know, who is interested. Simmons started gathering signatures to meet the requirements. But with that policy, you know, we are kind of up against it a little bit because we'd like, you know, if it is going to get passed, we'd like students to be able to get in place and let them do their, you know, their interviews and their selection process. So I would actually like to make a motion that for twenty-two forty-five, we put that up for final adoption. We amend the agenda to put that up for final adoption.
Sorry, Patty, we were just talking on the side here. As we get the policies, we'll make that motion to amend and then make the motion to, yeah, to accept, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, yeah, no, my, my, my motion was strictly to, you know, to amend the agenda so that it says final adoption as opposed to first read. But if you want to do it when we get the policies, that's fine.
Yeah, that, that sounds good. That way it's all intact and encapsulated. All right, thank you, Patty. Anything else?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, sure. Moving on, subsection five, or public comment. Do I have anyone here for public comment? I see no one. Thank you so much. Moving on to minutes. Be resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends the Board of Education approve the following minutes. Be the annual meeting minutes, public policy committee minutes, and the board meeting from five thirteen, twenty twenty-five. May I have a motion, please?
Motion Curry.
Curry, second, please. Dwayne, second. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, subsection seven. Be it CSC, CPSC, and five oh four recs. Resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends the Board of Education approve the CSC, CPSC, and five oh four recommendations dated June the tenth of twenty fifteen. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion John.
John, motion, second, please.
You.
Eric, thank you for second. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gentlemen, moving on to subsection seven, personnel. Be resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education the following resolutions on this consent agenda, via resignations, appointments, and tenure, being up hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion Curry.
Curry, may I have a second?
Second, Padraig.
Second. Padraig, discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, gents. Oh, that was it, right, Terry? All right, gotcha. Yay! Well, Stanley, well, let's go back and discuss that first. Slip, I mean. No, not at all. Subsection nine, miscellaneous. Be resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends the Board of Education the following resolution on the consent agenda, consent agenda, pardon me, school bus use for North Country Honor Flight and Athletic murders be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion John.
John, motion, second?
Please.
And may I have discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Just for the record, I have signed those athletic mergers and passed them forward. So the record is clear. Be it to amended, I think that's where I'm at, yeah, subsection D of the same section, D amended employment agreement of Superintendent, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the amended employment agreement dated June tenth, twenty twenty-five, between the superintendent, between Beaveton City Central School District and Dustin Relation. Secondarily, before we have the roll call, be it further resolved that the President of the Board of Education, Padraig Bean, be able to authorize to execute said amended employment agreement on behalf of the board. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Curry?
Second, John.
Second. Mr. Fairchild, any discussion? No discussion, gentlemen? Roll call vote, please.
Troy Anderson?
Yes.
Padraig Bean?
Yes.
Dwayne Vibo?
Yes.
Eric Dayoque?
Yes.
John Fairchild?
Yes.
Jason Miller?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Motion passes. Congrats on getting it passed your first year. Mr. Relation?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I am a bit surprised, but let's just move forward. A subsection, I'll make a quick note here. It took us all about thirty seconds to, to come to this agreement, and we're happy to have you. Please, you've done a great job this first year. I know everyone feels the same, and we're excited about the years to come.
I am as well. I'm excited for the future.
Yep, yep, we are as well.
No, no, it's-
I'm just kidding. Moving on to policies. Oh, here's where we'll do that piece.
You may, you may be surprised, but I have a, I have a motion to make.
Yes.
Yeah, please, go ahead, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda and strike first reading from twenty-two forty-five and move it along to final adoption.
I'll second that.
Sec, uh, yeah, actually, the motion would be, he's making the motion, right? Yeah, so you're second, sorry. Yeah, got you, guys. Any discussion on that? I see the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Being approved that draft policy twenty-three forty-five is into a final adoption. With that being said, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends the Board of Education approve the following policies, be it policy eighty-one, eighty-one thirteen, just the first reading, and then like I just said, twenty-three forty-five for the final adoption. May I have a motion, please?
Please.
Dwayne, and?
Second, Jason.
Jason, the second. Any discussion, gents? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion passes. Be it to financials, subsection eleven, resolved that the, oh, pardon me. I guess I'd do a motion to move the list, because we have quite a bit there underneath.
No, you got the first one first.
Do I do the first one first and then move the list? Okay, got you, guys. Thank you. Uh, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends the Board of Education the following resolutions on this consent agenda, be it transfers agreement with CS Arch and disposal of district property be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion John.
John Fairchild, second?
Curry.
Second.
Mr. Curry, and discussion? No discussion? Roll call vote, please?
Troy Anderson?
Pass.
Padraig Bean?
Yes.
Dwayne Vibo?
Pass.
Eric Dayoque?
Pass.
John Fairchild?
Yes.
Curry Jolker?
Pass.
Jason Miller?
Yes.
Oh, I see. Okay. So as to be it to section eleven, subsection E, I do motion to move the list? No?
No, make your remarks.
Do I read? No, I'm not reading. You're crazy. I don't want to.
Okay, motion, move the list.
I will second that motion.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? All in favor?
No.
Okay. This adoption, uh, motion passes. The adoption of the four-game resolution was duty put to a roll call vote, which resulted as follows. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Curry, second?
You're agreeing with the motion.
Do I?
You motioned to move it.
Oh, but don't, don't we start doing the roll call on that?
Yeah. But you don't need another motion.
Oh, I don't, do I just still say that?
Get it straight.
I'm so frustrated right now. All right. So that is asking for roll call vote?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call vote, please?
Troy Anderson?
Yes.
Padraig Bean?
Yes.
Dwayne Vibo?
Yes.
Eric Dayoque?
Yes.
John Fairchild?
A confused yes.
Curry Jolker?
Yes.
Jason Miller?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That's a good note to end on, almost. Additional items to discuss. Just very quickly, so I, we have a, the board will reorganize itself in the July meeting, which entails, as all you guys know, entails a vote amongst ourselves for president, vice president, et cetera. I want to say I've truly enjoyed being vice president. It's a, I've learned a lot in my two years. I can say any member of any board of education, particularly this one, I'm behind closed doors in executive sessions. I'm a big advocate of advocating for that the board maintain its institutional integrity, because the longer you stay here, the more you learn. And the things that I was arguing my first month here seem maybe not so, maybe not in the right frame of mind, you know, after you've had a couple of years, especially in this position, you're privy to speaking with the superintendent on different issues and face-to-face and so forth. And it's a good educational opportunity. I, I hope, I'm not going to seek the vice president part for next year. I'll still be down there, probably where Mr. Curry is, and chucking rocks at the president and vice president, as I would prefer to do. But nonetheless, it does mean I won't come back to this position in a couple, three years and yet learn again. With that said, gentlemen, I would say anybody who has the opportunity to step into this VP role, or I don't expect a lot of change, Padraig Bean who's online is doing a wonderful job as president, and I expect us to, to vote in that direction, whether that's his, here or there. And whoever chooses that vice president spot, I would recommend whoever takes it next, please raise your hand the next time that person's done and say, hey, I want to jump in there, because you really do learn a lot. And I look forward to being able to take a backseat, so to speak, and be able to use that knowledge to, to help, you know, further our mission. With that said as well, thanks, guys, for, basically administrators, those guys, you guys got tenure, the staff that got tenure today, and the folks that worked really hard. I see a difference, at least I feel like it, being an outsider, being in this leadership. We're all leaders up here. We're all leaders in this room, for that matter. But being in a support role to, to you guys and, and hearing what you have or hearing what you, what you need and trying to facilitate that and make sure you have everything that, that, that you want or need or have to have in order to facilitate your intent. And so thanks for the staff and the leaders in the, amongst the staff and the support staff that probably go really unsung amongst all this tenure discussions and whatnot and make the whole machine move. Anyway, thanks for you guys for a strong, a really great year. I, I felt, I felt better about this year. Be, again, being an outsider, all I'm ever going is looking through the window, right? It's, it's hard to touch what you guys really do. And again, going back to being a VP, it's helped me touch that a little bit. Anyway, that said as well, I know Mr. Fairchild would like to say a couple of words as well. Please, please, John.
I've never been known to say anything. I just want to say thank you for this experience. It's been rewarding, challenging, and a growth experience. And in forty years, it's been one of the most interesting things I've ever done. As you continue on this strategic path, which I think is the right way to be going, I appreciate the work that the teachers, sports staff, administrators, and everybody else is doing. Please remember, it's like in an aircraft carrier in the middle of the ocean. It takes a long time to turn it. Changes in school culture take five to eight years, and you've got work ahead of you. But the work you've done is a great start. And till we meet again.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you so much. I, I will make a quick note that when I said I wasn't going to be vice president, no one said, oh, no. So I want to go back just about two minutes and say, I'm not going to be vice president next year.
Oh, yeah.
All right, anyway. Yeah, all right. Anyway, with that being the case, subsection thirteen, public comment.
Let me try out one more piece.
Oh, oh, sorry.
For additional items. One thing just for the board. So obviously, you know, we made you aware that our, our current labor council is seeking other opportunities. So I've done some initial work, looking at firms to bring on board. And what I'd like to know from the board is, how would you like to proceed? The firms that I've been in contact with, they have all said they'd be willing to meet with you if you'd like. The other option is, I have no problem giving a recommendation based on what I have for information. I could do something. I assume if you want to sit and see each of the firms, then we need to select a date, which I can absolutely do. If you're comfortable with me making a recommendation based on the experiences that I have, I'm comfortable with that as well. I just want to know how you'd like to proceed.
How many firms do we have?
I've got three right now.
I prefer to meet them face-to-face if possible.
Okay.
Gentlemen, any?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Agreed.
What I will do then is, we will set up something tomorrow with-
So what I will do then is we will set up something tomorrow with some date options. It may not fit everyone's schedule and I'll apologize in advance, but because of the fact that we want to make sure we have an appointment for that July board meeting, we, we're going to have to try to, to make sure that we can find a date that will work. And I'll work with the firms on this is the date once we have selected together.
Do we have to have someone in place prior to the, I mean, can we go bare for?
I would not want to go without. Jen's over there. We would definitely want to make sure we have something. I can see your face over there. Holly, Jen and I sat down this morning.
I mean, what could go wrong? Okay, thank you.
So we will make sure to get that set up.
Mr. Pugh, yes.
Yeah, just got one thing, stepping back to ten policies. The file attachments, I mean, it's kind of like a very narrowly issue here. They don't align with two-two-four-five, the attachment that sets down the little two-three-four-five.